... from Pastor Billy McLeod of Central Assembly of God. Before we do that, if I may, if we could just take a moment of silence. We lost a very integral part of our family and community recently, Mr. Tim McGary, who was our planning director. And I had the pleasure of knowing Mr. McGary for many years, and he was a great teacher for me when I was on planning and zoning, and he was always very helpful, and he's done a lot for our community. And I just wanted to express my appreciation. I know that we all have a lot of respect for that man. And we also had another loss within the county today, which we're saddened by. Mr. David Nolte passed away last evening. He was a property appraiser for many years. So we just have a moment of silence right before we do the invocation, and that'd be great. Pastor McLeod, if you would, please, sir.
Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us. We thank you for your blessings, and we just ask now for your wisdom and all the decisions that need to be made. We just give you the praise now in the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. And Mrs. Moss, if you'd lead us in the pledge.
Yes, please join me.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will call, today is November 6th, Vero Beach City Council meeting to order. We'll start with the roll call, Tammy.
Dr. Zidanez.
Here.
Councilwoman Moss.
Present.
Vice Mayor Sykes.
Present.
Mayor Howell.
Present. Okay. For the approval of last meeting's minutes, does anyone have any changes?
I do not.
Great.
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. For the agenda, any deletions or additions to the agenda today? Staff?
Staff has no changes.
Counsel?
None.
None.
Great. Let's all keep in mind today is a truncated meeting. We have to be out of here by 5:00. Just to let everybody know. So I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Proclamations and recognitions by counsel. This is a "Live Like Cole" Day, November 10th, 2018. If we could get, come on up. You guys just come on up to the podium, and Mr. Dr. Zidanez, if you want to read the proclamation.
I would be honored to. Proclamation. Whereas what started as hashtag "Live Like Cole" by his friends and family after Nicholas Anthony Cole Coppola IV was killed by a drunk driver in 2014, to memorialize Cole and to serve as a reminder to live like Cole lived by always being kind because it was the right thing to do. And whereas the Live Like Cole Foundation was officially founded in 2015 and operates as a 501(c)(3) organization in Indian River County with its mission to encourage children and adults alike to support others, to foster self-worth, and to help out their fellow man. And whereas the Live Like Cole Foundation is managed by a volunteer board of directors and a group of volunteers who contribute their time and talent. And whereas the Live Like Cole Foundation relies on donations from the community and relationships with local partners. And whereas seeing the positive effects of the foundation, Dillard's at the Indian River Mall has initiated a community-wide event called "Live Like Cole Day" on Saturday, November 10th, 2018, to celebrate acts of kindness and to spread awareness of the foundation's mission. And whereas "Live Like Cole Day" will be a special day set aside each year to encourage and remind children and adults that kindness matters and is always important. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, does hereby proclaim Saturday, November 10th, 2018, as "Live Like Cole Day" in the city of Vero Beach, and urge all citizens to support the continuous mission of this organization to encourage all to take action and to spread kindness.
Thank you all very much. We are humbled and honored, and we are truly blessed today to have such a wonderful community, the people at Dillard's, to name this proclamation. A wonderful group of people that work at the city, Wayne, Jim, Marty, Don, Tammy, and everybody else, and of course, Vice Mayor Sykes, Mayor Howell, Councilwoman Laura, Councilman Tony, and my buddy, Councilman Val. Thank you guys very much. We love you guys.
Thank you very much.
The little foundation that couldn't.
I tell you, man, you'd be hard-pressed to find anybody more kind than you and your family and your volunteers. We appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
She's got a new project. She went in the garage and found a box of Cole shoes and found out that they needed them up in Panama City. So anybody that has shoes, they want to get rid of them, then give them to me.
Thank you.
I have some shoes for you.
Imagine Lang has one of those.
That's right.
Yeah, let's go to the right.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on.
We're still going.
You're going too far now. Get it back over here. Good Lord. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you guys.
See you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appears we don't have any staff reports today for presentation items, so for now, let's move on. Can everybody hear me okay? My apologies. For now, just move on to public comment, and well, three minutes for anyone who has a public comment to speak. Yes, sir.
I think they need three minutes to get up there.
Well, time doesn't start till you do, Charlie.
Before I begin, before you press the button, I want two little things. One is, I'd like to point out that I'm wearing a Hawaiian shirt in memory of David Nolte, who always showed up everywhere in a Hawaiian shirt, no matter what, no matter where. He means a lot to this community. I'd also like, since today's election day, to take a moment to thank Lang Sykes. He may be forced into service longer than he had intended, but I have to tell you, I appreciate all of your hard work and your term, and you've done a fine job, and I'm proud to know you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Okay. Well, the reason for my, now you can press the button. The reason for my being up here is I want to make sure that you guys are informed of everything. I know that we've had a terrible mess with this election, and I know what it's like to be in the midst of a terrible mess of an election happened to me. But I'm not sure that, I want to make sure that you have been informed, and so I'm not asking you to do anything, I just want to ask you the question. Are you aware that Ms. Hillman is not a qualified candidate regardless of what's on file in the city clerk's office? Now, I know this has been a problem, and I want to take some of the heat off the city clerk, because the city clerk is the clerk, and she is not an elections officer. This happened in Fort Pierce to my relative, who is the mayor of Fort Pierce. The person that filed to run against that, Lynda Hudson is her name, was disqualified because she made a common mistake that disqualifies people every single year. Her opponent paid the filing fee with a check signed by the candidate and not the treasurer. The state of Florida has determined that that is a disqualification instantly. They have been contacted about this one, because Ms. Hillman did just that. The check for the qualifying fee was signed by Ms. Hillman when Ms. Kramer was the treasurer. Now, what people do to go around that is that they appoint themselves as an assistant treasurer. When I do campaigns, I always have somebody, the candidate, appointed as assistant treasurer. But Ms. Hillman did not do that. Now, the city has been informed of this. They also have a letter from the state that tells them that Ms. Hillman is not a qualified The information that I got, so my question is, is have you been informed of this information that's gone back and forth by your legal department? Have you seen the correspondence from the state?
No.
Have you seen the reaction from the legal department that told Mr. Mutcher that they were not going to follow up on this particular item? When does the city attorney's office get to decide what laws they're going to follow and what laws they're not, and when they're going to talk to you about it, and when they're going to inform you, and when they're not? Now, I know that every time I stand up here, I'm going to be bullied by the legal department, you know? So, you know, and I'm sure that's going to happen here. So I'm not going to tell you what to do, or, I just want you to be aware that Ms. Hillman is not a candidate. She was not a candidate at the time, at the moment the qualifying period closed. Ms. Hillman was not a candidate. She was not a candidate when she filed the lawsuit. She does, has no standing, because she was not a candidate. The point is, is that your staff is aware of this. Are you? Do you have any questions?
I don't at this time, but if there is correspondence, I'd like to see that correspondence.
Do we have, is there such a letter from the state?
I am not familiar with any letter from the state.
Okay. Where's Mr. Mutcher?
Okay. I was copied with the emails back and forth between Mr. Mutcher and the city, okay? That included the question that was answered for Mr. Mutcher by the state. What the answer from the assistant city attorney was, the city has no plans to pursue this at this moment. So my question is, if this is, and you'll see it, I mean, it'll come up, you'll find it, it's in the emails, why wasn't Judge Canarac informed of this? Was this information withheld from Judge Canarac? And how many times do we have to do this?
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Your legal department works for you. You do not work for your legal department.
Would the city clerk please check this matter?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? No one? Okay, we're going to close it out if nobody else wants to speak. All right, public comment's closed. Moving on to the consent agenda. If you want to run through that, Mr. O'Connor?
Sure. The fishing pier at Riverside Park, the final acceptance and pay, as you know, this is the Live Like Cole fishing pier. This is the final payment of $18,579, the total cost of $185,000 and some dollars, but the city was not responsible for any of those. We had a fine grant, plus the Live Like Cole Foundation raised the remaining part. The street resurfacing final pay and acceptance, we did $584,000 in street resurfacing. This is the final pay, and it's $25,767, and we will make that final payment on street resurfacing. Power Secure, this is a change. We had an annual contract with them. They supply linemen and backup to our electric department, and we're going to go for a month-to-month contingency, assuming that the sale is going to happen within the next 90 days, we hope. And so we're just going to extend it on a month-to-month as opposed to a annual contract. Treasure Coast Storage and Amendment, this is a lease agreement out at the airport. What we did is, they wanted to refinance, and so they did not extend the lease. It still goes to 2028, I think it is, but it means a $3,800 increase in rent payment to the airport, so it was a good deal for us. Their interest rates and overhead costs went down probably much larger than that, so it was a good deal for the Treasure Coast Storage at Vero. Portable radio replacements, that's a $78,000 purchase. As you know, we started last year in the purchasing of these radios. This is our second purchase. The unfortunate part is, is that we purchased the radios last year, but the invoice didn't come into this fiscal year, so you'll see it redundant in this fiscal year at the end of the budget period, which we may have to make a budget amendment to do that. But it was still on a three-year plan that we were doing, replacement of the radios in the police department.
How far along are we?
Pardon me?
How far along are we?
This will be two-thirds.
Okay.
The contraband forfeiture and fund purchase, we're asking to move $2,145 from that fund to purchase rifles for the police officers. Also, we have some grant money there that'll be used for the remaining balance in the purchase of those firearms. Renewable contract, compressed liquid chlorine, this is a contract we do on an annual basis. It's about $125,000 a year at the wastewater treatment plant. Vepex odor control, this is a control system that ours started malfunctioning. We thought we were going to have it rebuilt. That was going to cost somewhere in the neighborhood of $37,000. A new one was like $145,000. We found a replacement, a rebuilt one, for $55,000, and recommending that we go with the rebuilt odor control system. And this will help our friends crossing over the 17th Street Bridge, won't get the first-class odor of our plant if this thing works.
And the people living in Fairlane Harbor, I would think, will be happy.
I think so as well. Especially when the wind's blowing in a different.
Yes.
Public Works Compound, this is a roof replacement. We had started last year, and you had budgeted for two roofs to be replaced, and then you budgeted another $100,000 this year for two additional roofs, so we're going to do the contract. And this is a contract change order to include the other two roofs in that, under that same contract. We take advantage of the benefit of that bid that is taking place, and the price per unit that will be there. And this change order will go up to $100,000, and it'll be metal roofs on those buildings. Solid Waste Franchise Agreement for the roll-off containers, as you know, we, the city, do not do roll-off containers, and this would be, and there's like nine companies that do this, they get a franchise with us. It's a 6% franchise fee that they pay to the city. It's non-exclusive. Anybody that wants to do roll-offs can come in, they just register with the city, and we put them on our list. You've recently approved four of these, I believe, at one of our last meetings, and this is an additional four this time. And that's all we have under the consent agenda.
Any discussion from counsel?
I do have just one question. Did we at some point decide that we were going to remove the monetary amounts associated with the consent agenda?
I think I said that it was unnecessary.
Unless we had something over a certain amount or something.
Yeah.
I just, historically, they were always on there. I was curious as to what happened.
Yeah. We can start putting them back on if that's what counsel wants.
I think it'd be a good idea.
Yeah, I think we passed, I think that was part of the resolution that we passed at the time, if resolution's a proper term, when we changed the structure. I think you're right, Vice Mayor Sykes.
I was just curious to know.
Yeah, and it should be on there. Yeah, thank you for pointing that out.
We'll start putting it, as you know, that information is, just for the public information, it is in the backup and where the numbers are, but we'll put them on the front of the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor.
I have no discussion.
Any discussion done on that end?
I'll make a motion to approve then.
Skip public comment real quick, and any public comment on any of these issues, any of these matters, under the consent agenda? Seeing none?
I'll second it.
Great, we got a motion, we got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Moving on to resolutions.
Okay. A resolution of the city council of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, authorizing the city to enter into a public transportation grant agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation for a project entitled Vero Beach Regional Airport Terminal Area Study, providing for an effective date requested by the airport director.
This is an 80/20 matching grant with the Department of Transportation. As you know, as we are still in pursuit of commercial airlines, and part of that, we need to address that our airport terminal, and so this will help us do that. The 80/20 grant is good. The fact of the matter is, the city will have about $15,000 in this study. It's a $75,000 total study for that terminal. We have already started looking at some drawings and this type, and trying to figure out how much capacity we really need.
Any discussion?
Nope.
None down here? Okay, any public comment on the resolution? Okay, seeing none, we'll take roll call.
I need a motion.
I'll make one. Oh, sorry.
I'll second it.
Okay, we'll switch roles.
Great, now we have a roll call.
Dr. Zidanez.
Yes.
Colonel Young.
Yes.
Councilwoman Moss.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sykes.
Yes.
Mayor Howell.
Yes.
The next is public notice items for a future public hearing. This will be held on November 20th at 3:00. An ordinance of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, related to the budget for the city of Vero Beach, Florida, for the period beginning October 1st, 2017, and ending September 30th, 2018, providing and establishing revisions to said budget based on revised revenue expenditure and transfer estimates, providing for an effective date requested by the finance director.
Just as a point of notice, what this will do, and you're setting the date, so the public hearing will be next time, but just to let you know, this will reflect what actually took place last fiscal year in the budget itself, so there's not too much to mess around with, because if you spent $10, you spent $10, and this is reflective of that, and that's what the state will use as part of our balanced budget.
Okay, and the next is an ordinance that will be heard for public hearing on November 20th at 3:00 PM. An ordinance of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 6, Section 6-9 of the Code of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, relating to prohibitions on the sale, possession, and consumption of alcoholic beverages on public property, providing clarification of permit requirements and approvals to conduct prohibited activities, providing clarification of other exceptions, providing for conflict and severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date requested by the city attorney.
Okay, thank you for that. Anyone have any questions about that?
This is the discretion we're allowing for the city manager to...
Yes, sir. This is, if there are events in city parks that used to come, or do come to city council for approval of alcoholic permits, no one has ever been denied, so I think the suggestion was, and what you all are doing here, is allowing the city manager to approve the permit. If a permit is turned down, obviously, they have the right to appeal to the city council.
That's my thought. Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Okay, moving on to the city clerk matters.
Okay, we have a couple of reappointments to some of our commissioning boards. The first one is the airport commission. Carol Jean Jordan's term expires on November 15th, and she would like to be reappointed.
I have no problem with that. I have no problem with that.
That's fine with me.
I have no problem either. I would never vote against Carol Jean Jordan. Do you have a question, though? Did anyone else apply for the positions?
No, no applications on file. I would need a motion for that.
I get to move that one. I move to approve that one.
I will second, I will second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Okay, on the marine commission, Mr. Bill Walker and Mr. Bill Johnson's terms expire on October 15th, and both members would like to be reappointed. Now, for the marine commission, we do have one application on file, and that is from Alan Keith Drewitt. And I have attached their attendance records since they've been on the commission.
And what position, where's your...
This is the marine commission.
Okay, I thought, I was looking at something different. Yeah, the only one I see is the...
They're attached, they would be on your iPad. Neither one of them have missed very many meetings.
Okay.
Yeah, seeing that we have two standing board members that want to continue on, then I would be for granting their request.
Sure, and can we fill the application with another spot?
We will. I have asked this gentleman if there's another commission that he would like to serve on, and he wants to serve on the marine commission, so I told him we would keep his application on file.
Okay. Excellent. All right.
Very good.
Let's take, we'll take a motion on it, make it official.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Okay, and the last one is the recreation commission, and that is Mr. Dick Yim. His term expires on November 15th, and he would like to be reappointed. I did give you his attendance record. He has been on that board since 1997.
Couple of years.
On 22 meetings.
Not at all.
And was there anyone else?
No applications on file.
Thank you. I move to approve.
Right, second.
I'll second.
Excellent, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
And we do have...
And just for the public record, these were all noticed last meeting, so that if anyone was watching and was interested in these, and they're wondering why they didn't get a chance to apply, they should have watched the last meeting.
Right.
And that is our policy, that we're, going forward, we're going to do that. We're going to always announce openings coming up, so if you're dying to be on a committee, put in your application now, and we'll hold it until there's an opening, and then in the meantime, if you watch city council meetings, you'll see that there's an opportunity to participate in your local government.
And we do have some openings. We have two alternate positions open on the code enforcement board. On the fire pension board, there is one full-time position open. On the historic preservation commission, there is one alternate position open. And on the tree and beautification commission, there is one position open. Okay, thank you. My next item is a request for a code enforcement lien reduction, and the property is located at 2136 34th Avenue, and Chief Curry was going to address this.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. So again, the property in question is at 2136 34th Avenue, belonging to a Ms. Jill, I hope I pronounced it correctly, Haasis, H-A-A-S-I-S. And this case was initiated in 2010 regarding a dead tree on the property that needed to be permitted to be removed. So there was a citation issued, $50, on November 3rd of 2010. They were given a month to correct the violation. That was not done. The case came before the code enforcement board on March 9th of 2011. Violation had not been corrected, nor had the civil penalty of $50 been paid, and at that time, a motion by the code enforcement board to issue a notice of assessment of continuing penalties of 50 a day commencing on December 4th of 2000 was initiated, and that was to include enforcement costs of $126.93.
December 4th of what year?
To December 4th, 2010, sir.
Okay, thank you.
The case, the case was returned to the code enforcement board on April 13th of 2011, and this was in reference to an order to correct violation imposing civil penalties and to pay civil penalties and costs assessed by the, again, the code enforcement board. And then there were follow-ups as well by code enforcement yielding no corrective action. The dates were June 22nd of 2011, October 17th of 2011, December 21st, 2011, February 20th, 2012, March 20th, 2012, April 20th, 2012, and May 31st, 2012. Once again, the case came before the code enforcement board, and this was September 12th of 2012. The property had been bought into compliance as of August 2nd, 2012. So the board issued an order finding compliance and ceasing the continuing penalties. As of the hearing date, the following costs were owed. It was the $50 initial penalty, the continuing civil penalties of $30,400 that had accrued from the December 4th, 2010 date through August 2nd of 2012, which was when they came into compliance, and that was 608 days total, including the code enforcement costs of $126.93. So at that time, the total was $30,576.93, and my recommendation is to not reduce the lien. They wanted to reduce the lien to zero. I would also include the cost to record the lien and the city attorney costs as well, and that total is $30,691.58 in total.
Chief, just out of curiosity, did anyone from code enforcement or the police make contact, physical contact, with the homeowner?
I think a number of times, and it was David Kakey. Some of you remember, may remember David Kakey, works for the county now, but at that time, he was with city of Vero Beach Code, excuse me. And the reason for the lien reduction per the owner was due to a loss of job and health issues, and then they wanted a new owner to fix the property if it was sold. There was a number of contacts back and forth, and I believe it's in the backup, it was quite the list of material, but David Kakey made contact, or attempted contacts on numerous occasions, to include the follow-ups that I mentioned here, with no results.
Just out of curiosity, I don't want to go into any specifics, but probably the last time we looked at a potential lien reduction, there was some similar circumstances with being unable to work, et cetera, and your recommendation was to reduce that amount? Obviously, in this particular case, you feel as though the homeowners had more than, you know, ample opportunity to fix this?
I believe so. And again, if it's the one I think you're referring to, sir, the code board had requested the reduction during one of their meetings, which I agreed to as well.
Sure.
Based on the information that was available.
I defer to your judgment on this.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, see, this went on for a very long time, and we have our rules and our regulations for a reason.
Yeah.
And so if that lien stands and it can be paid, when or if the house is sold?
I didn't see any, anything to point us in a different direction, to be honest with you. And again, it started with a.
If not before.
A dead tree in the property that was supposed to be removed with a warning, and then a $50 citation and a month to be corrected early December of 2010, and was finally corrected, you know, a couple of years later.
So just a couple of comments, just a question. One was the, the code board also recommended not reducing this one, or it did not go before the?
In the, the dates that I spoke about, sir?
Yeah.
That was all in front of the code board, and to my knowledge and understanding, there was no recommendation to make a reduction in any way, shape, or form. Based on what I had.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And the other comment I have is that it sounds kind of harsh, and it sounds like a lot, but this is also, this is a protection for the other Vero Beach homeowners that you don't have, you know, overgrown yards and grass and things like that. And so you have to also consider the neighbors who are there, and, and I just wanted to verify, and like the initial citation, and that's the equivalent of like a, someone being served, it's actually documented and everything by a officer, right?
Correct.
Okay.
$50 worth of month to correct the, you know, the violation. And we truly try to be fair every time we come before you.
Thank you.
Is there a representative from the owner here?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, if the rep, if the owner is here or their representative, we need, council needs to hear from them.
Do we have the owner of this property present today?
Is Ms. Haasis or?
Ms. Haasis.
Part of the, part of my summary here was alluded to, she had authorized a Mr. Paul J. Anna Sevis to represent her in handling the request.
Mr. Anna Sevis here today? No one representing this, okay. I'll move that we, the fines stand at $30,691.58.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye. We didn't need public comment? I don't know.
No.
No, it's really personal to this property and this.
Okay, thank you.
We got, do we get any nasal in that one?
No.
All right, great. Well, then hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief.
Move on to council member matters, and I should have written down, I did have one matter. I'm going to defer for a moment and see if I can.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Did you jump over the city manager and the city attorney? They don't have any.
They don't, you don't have any matters today, right?
Any questions from the mayor, council?
Any questions for either of those two gentlemen?
Negative.
Okay, I'm going to defer for a moment and see if I can regroup my thoughts as to what I was going to mention here, so.
Yeah, I'll go real quick. I don't have much. I just wanted to thank all parties involved and the principals of Beachland School and St. Ed's, and thank Tony. Had a really fun time at the tree dedication ceremonies. It was special for me. I attended both of those schools, and so really enjoyed it. And it was, it was fun. We got to sing the old Beachland Sharks song, so.
Wonderful, no, this is what it's about.
Yeah, so thank you for that opportunity, and thanks to everyone for donating the trees. God bless.
Okay, you ready?
I'm ready. Moving on to Councilwoman Moss.
Oh, okay. If you haven't voted yet, get out and vote. It's exhilarating. The turnout today is tremendous. There are so many people. It's just, it's just wonderful to be a part of it, be a part of the process. I did a little bit of research because I couldn't remember exactly when women got the right to vote. We, you know, we're at our centennial year, and thank you, Vice Mayor Sykes, for mentioning that. We're at our centennial year. Women have had the right to vote less than 100 years. I had forgotten that. I looked it up. The 19th Amendment became part of the U.S. Constitution on August 26th, 1920. It states, "The right of citizens of the United States to vote shall not be, shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or any other state on account of sex." So we need to get out there. You know, it's, it's really important. You know, people fought so hard for this right to vote, you know, and women especially, for such a long time. We need to, we need to appreciate it and exercise that right. I also wanted to thank the Indian River County Historical Society. Speaking of the right to vote, this was a funny story that came up in a play that they put on last week that had to do with Ruth Halstrom. The play was terrific, and actually, in Florida, Florida does everything different. We already know that, right? We already know that. And in Florida, the first woman to cast a ballot, that occurred on June 19th, 1915, all right? So it was five years earlier than the rest of the country in a city election in Felsmere. The town had unanimously adopted a charter in February 1915 granting this right, and the charter was ratified by the state legislature, that's Tallahassee, without noticing this provision. So Tallahassee didn't notice, and it went through. The first woman there voted in 1915. Halstrom, by the way, the Halstrom House, this weekend, on Saturday, November 10th, there's the pineapple festival from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. So they're having, this is sponsored by the Historical Society. They do a wonderful job. All of their events are a lot of fun, so I invite the community. Thank you.
I, thank you, Councilwoman Moss. I remember now what it was I wanted to do, and this is, we have someone new who will now be running the planning, be operating as planning director. So if Mr. Jason, let's see if I can make you blush. Mr. Jason Jeffries would just come up and say hello, I'd appreciate it.
Congratulations, sir.
Wow, welcome.
Want to say.
Caught him off guard.
Hello, I'm Jason Jeffries. I'm the new planning director, and previously, I was just a redevelopment manager up in Daytona Beach.
Excellent.
For 12 years.
Well, we are, you have some big shoes to fill.
I understand.
And I know it's going to take a little bit of time to get in your groove, and we're very pleased and happy to have you, and wish you the best, and look forward to working with you.
Look forward to working with you all.
You didn't blush at all.
I think you'll quickly find we're not Daytona either.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, sir.
Just for information, a lot of his background really deals with what we're looking for. For example, working with neighborhoods and community areas. So he has that experience, which we're hoping that will benefit where we are. During the interview process, we told him we were virtually built out, but we talked about how we needed to redevelop where we have, and to make sure that our improvements, you know, qualify with what the City of Vero Beach wants.
We have a really big thing that's going to happen to our city after the electric sale goes through. It's going to be a huge planning thing. It's going to be very interesting.
So Jason, are you a UT graduate, University of Tennessee?
Tennessee.
No, he's from Ohio.
From Ohio.
Okay. That's a safe bet here. Very good.
Thank you very much. We welcome you. Councilman Young, if you'd like to go on to your matters.
Sure, sure. So a number of things. The Association of University of, University of Women asked for a little update on Florida and a book review, and it coincides with a theme of tonight, and it's called "Oh, Florida", and it's all the weird anomalies which distinguish our state from any other state in the Union. And just a couple of highlights that were brought to my attention. Some codes that are still in force, it's illegal to sing in public places wearing a bathing suit. Women may be fined for falling asleep under a hair dryer. Clearwater still has the highest rate of lightning strikes in the United States. And Florida's not the southernmost state in the United States. Hawaii's further south. So if you have the opportunity, "Oh, Florida" is a very interesting book, and it has a lot of tidbits, and includes Vero. Councilwoman Moss mentioned the fact that we have had a number of events earlier. There was a parade on Saturday, Veterans Parade, which I just want to highlight because in the Veterans Parade, we had the opportunity for Major General Clay Buckingham to return to Vero. He grew up here during the Second World War. Was 18 when he graduated from Vero Beach High School in 1945. And he related the fact that during the Second World War, the entire county of Indian River County was evacuated to the West Coast as a drill, okay, as the Germans came ashore. And so it's phenomenal to listen to these people that come back into, into our area that are, that are, would you wouldn't say pioneers. Also, on Saturday, the 10th, there is a ton of events going on. And one of the events near and dear to my heart will be the Memorial Island Veterans Ceremony. And it's going to happen on Saturday because we wanted, the veterans wanted to de-conflict that with the Sunday requirements. So 9:00, Veterans Memorial Island is the Veterans Day Ceremony, and it's also the Veterans Ceremony for the Centennial. And so a part of that ceremony will be the dedication of the Gold Star Grove, which are set aside in honor of the families that have lost loved ones for, during wartime. In addition to the Memorial Island Ceremony, American Legion Post 39 has a ceremony at lunchtime, dedicating some bricks for veteran families that have lost loved ones. And then at 3:00 on Saturday, if you're so available, is the Blessing of the Fleet. And so the Commodore Neville is in charge, and he's done an extraordinary job for that. So take advantage of it, and I would be remiss without asking you to put on your calendar November 17th, and that is the date for the Oceanside Bonfires. So between the Driftwood Inn, Gloria Estefan, Mulligans, and Vero Spa, Hotel and Spa, they will have a tremendous occasion there. And there are many, many other ones I'm not going to go into. So go to Vero Beach, spelled out, number 100100.org, and look at the activities because it's, it's pretty phenomenal. And thank you for giving me time.
Councilman Young is our unofficial events coordinator.
We always appreciate that.
I just wanted to just say thank you to Chief Curry and the Vero Beach Police Department. There was a last-minute big rally for someone running for governor in our town yesterday, and they did a really great job of managing the crowd and all that, which was pretty large, so good job, thank you. And I also wanted to, it was mentioned briefly by the Live Like Cold, but there are, up through November 15th at noon, you can drop off shoes that are going to end up going up to the Panhandle. Those kids are, they're obviously back, they're going to be, the people who are out of school because school's closing, they're going to be going back, and they may have had, they have lots of clothes and things, but they don't have shoes, apparently. So they're collecting them at my office at Florida Eye Institute. There'll be drop-off boxes there at Einstein Bagels and Walking Tree Brewery. And they prefer new shoes, or, but they will take gently used shoes as well. If you have any, please just drop them off one of those locations.
All ages? Is it all ages?
I'll have to ask my wife. All ages or just youth?
They'll take anything from like pre-K through 12th grade. So like a whole range of sizes.
Pre-K through 12th grade.
Not leave aside some of the.
Amen. Okay.
I just want to make one comment, and going back on what Mr. Sedan said about the rally that was here, we do provide and we don't charge, for example, when Joe Biden came into town, and when we have other dignitaries from Washington. In this particular case, we had Secret Service that was involved, and so we coordinated with them, with the police department. We do not charge for those type of activities. We had an inquiry as to, did we pay for or support some particular campaign? And the answer is no, we did not. We do this because of the type of dignitary that's coming in. The dignitary in that case was really not the candidate as much as it was as one of the Trump family members coming in. And again, the Secret Service was there, and so there was a lot of activity in that respect as well.
And we appreciate that, especially on such a short notice.
Very short notice.
And, yeah, I think it's really cool that we have famous people coming to Vero Beach, you know? We're just a little old town, and yet people think we're important, so it's really cool.
You're here every day, bud. So anything else? All right, I'd like to go on record that that meeting was 45 minutes long, and it's now adjourned.
Take a new year.